Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Seven o'clock. Okay, I'll take a little call. Gregor? Here, Lee. Is that absent? Bobby?
Here.
Jan?
Here.
Reesma?
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to select a meeting moderator in the absence of Mike.
Can I make a motion? That'd be Bob.
I'll second that motion.
All votes in favor? Aye.
Aye. Make sure I got it correct for the record.
All right, thank you. I hope to keep this as short as possible. I'd like to make a motion that... I'm sorry, before we do that, if I wanted to remove something, Bobby, do I kind of do it now or wait?
We don't have everyone here, so I don't think you can change your agenda.
Okay, okay, great. Public comment on agenda items, anyone? Public comment on agenda items. Point one, point two, please. Okay, township of excellence policies. If I may start.
Could I make a motion to adopt the agenda? As is?
Well, our agenda is set, so we don't have to do a new agenda.
It's set for special meetings. So, the last time, we talked about Chapter Four. And we talked about auditor calls.
Yes, I did talk to Joe Berlin, and he said he could provide the analysis and the review of Chapter Four, which is all about financials, between $250 and $750 was his estimate. And I think that's reasonable, and he could probably... He said he could have it done by December 15th. Any discussion?
Do we need a motion to...
Yes.
...spend that money?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve up to $750 for the auditor to review Check Report.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. That was Janice.
Okay. In Chapter Five, I just wanted to let the board know that Mr. Huth will have Chapter Five legal review done by Friday, so I'll ask Mike to put it on the Tuesday agenda. And I had also previously asked the Police Department just to look over all these packets to see if there was anything that needed to be changed. So, I'm going to ask the board on Tuesday if we can add an additional sentence in Chapter Five at the very end that excludes them because of their negotiated union contract. And then we can also put that in that Chapter Ten. So, that takes us to Chapter Six. Any comments on Four or Five? Okay. So, that takes us to Chapter Six.
Do we need a motion?
No, it's on the agenda. We just go Chapter Six, Records Management. That's you.
That's me. Again, I can read this. There's the Records Management, there's up to here, four, five, six pages, actually five, I think. Let me get into FOIA. So, I'm going to go paragraph by paragraph, and we'll see what kind of discussion...
Just the highlights, right?
Right, just the highlights. I will read the first paragraph. "Records management policy shall apply to all officials, appointees, employers, agents, independent contractors, and volunteers of the township. Each individual who creates, sends, or receives official records is responsible for retaining those records in accordance with this policy. Records management responsibilities: The clerk shall be responsible for coordinating all records management procedures and activities for township's offices, departments, or services. Duties include distribution of record retention schedules, development and approval of township-specific record retention schedules, distribution of policies, guidelines, and standards published by the State of Michigan, arranging offsite storage facilities for inactive records, arranging microfilm and digital imaging services, arranging the destruction of confidential records with a vendor, coordinating all litigation holds to prevent the destruction of records that are relevant to Freedom of Information Act request, investigation, or litigation." So, that essentially outlines the responsibilities. Then we get into the incoming mail, which can be a record. It gets into duties of administrative assistant or office assistant to open and date in the letter, our letter for the correspondence. All correspondence written or electronic reported board action or any other action required by the township or its elected officials shall be presented with a clerk or the administrative assistant, and must be scanned filed and stored. Such correspondence must be provided in board packets at the next regular meeting. Any correspondence that records board, no board action, shall be assorted and distributed immediately to the various township offices. Mail addressed to the township board shall be forwarded to the clerk, who shall provide a copy of each board member. Correspondence addressed to the board but requiring action typically handled by a particular official such as FOIA shall be immediately forwarded to that official by the clerk or administrative assistant. As noted in the Policy Procedure 2.2, this manual, it just restates what's been stated before, an individual committee or organization shall represent its authority or action amended, that is, of the township board unless the township board has directed the individual or committee or organization to add on the township's behalf.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we need that in here.
Where was that stated before?
It's in Chapter Two. It's already there, so we don't need it again.
Okay. So, does that mean, Bob, you have sent letters on Township Letterhead? Does that mean you don't use Township Letterhead, or you do? You only use Township Letterhead when it's a board action, or can you use Township Letterhead all the time? Because that, to me, reads like you can't use the Township Letterhead.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
What do you want to change?
If it's already in here, why, like you said, don't say it again, but I'm just questioning what, if that's what that means.
Let's go back and look.
Like Jan's presentation for Sexton had the Township Letterhead, so we need to stop that Township Letterhead being used outside of letters directed by the board.
Yeah.
So, that's what you're saying?
We might have to change Two Two.
Yeah, I don't have a vote here.
Yeah, let me look.
Do we make better use of the microphones, please? Yeah.
I just don't think we need that in there. I'm just scratching.
Well, as long as it's in Two Two.
It is.
Okay. Can we check that before we scratch what's right here?
Try here.
Is there something specific that needs to be stated about Letterhead?
It says it right there.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
You only use it at the direction of the board, official correspondence.
So, like, he is the liaison for the source, so any official... Let me turn this on, sorry. Okay, any official correspondence that he would use in that instance would be official. And he could use the Letterhead because he has already designated the liaison for the source for the township.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that would be an exception, not the rule.
Right.
Okay. All right, so we'll just put a line through that. Does everybody agree?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Responsibility to enforce 6.3. Clerk shall ensure township officials, appointees, and employees are aware of and implement the township's record management policies. They shall ensure that the township has the most updated record retention schedules that cover all records regardless of form, format that are created and used by the township. Clerk shall ensure that the digital files emailed to the records of former officials, appointees, employees, volunteers, consultants are retained in accordance with approved record retention schedule. Any questions? Separation from township. Township officials, appointees, volunteers, and consultants shall not take public records with them when they terminate office, employment, or contract with the township and shall not destroy records that have not yet fulfilled their approval, approved retention period. Clerk is responsible for ensuring that the records included email and other digital records of employees who are separating are retained in accordance with the township's record retention policies. Failure to adhere to this records management policy... Failure to adhere may result in applicable discipline up to including discharge from employment, termination of contractor status, or termination of volunteer relationship. Further, the removal, mutilation, or destruction of public records may result in civil and criminal liability up to including penalty of not more than two years in state prison and a fine of more than $1,000. Records are maintained and stored to ensure township compliance with the law. The township officials, et cetera, shall create, develop, organize, maintain, retain, and store all township records to accommodate public inspection. FOIA complies with record retention requirements to minimize the township's exposure to litigation risk. Clerk shall develop procedures to accommodate access by FOIA coordinator for the purpose of public inspection of records. FOIA requests to discover other litigation-related requests. When specific records are required by law or township policy, they have limited access, specific records contain information exempt from disclosure. Township records are kept or used in home offices.
Hang on a second, where am I?
We're in Six Six.
Six Six.
Okay.
Six Seven is record retention schedules.
I've got a question about FOIA here. This is just the storage of FOIA, right?
Yes. What? Storage and access to, yes.
Okay. I'm just going to make a note, because when we go through the FOIA policy, I want to check that. Thanks.
Record retention schedules. All records will be retained in accordance with an approved record retention schedule. Records not listed on approved record retention schedule are considered permanent records and may not be disposed of until the schedule is approved. And I believe most record retention schedules dictate which items are permanent, and so there's not a... There's no confusion. Litigation, investigation, and Freedom of Information Act requests, FOIA coordinator shall keep a copy of all written requests for all records on file for less than one year. No records... We're almost done with Section Six here. No records that are the subject of litigation. A pending investigation request or pending FOIA request shall be destroyed until legal action or activity has ended, even if the records are otherwise scheduled for destruction pursuant to a relevant record retention schedule. Any individual with knowledge of pending litigation, pending investigation, or FOIA request shall immediately inform the FOIA coordinator. In consultation with the township attorney, the FOIA coordinator shall direct all relevant individuals to immediately cease disposal of all records relevant to the pending litigation investigation or FOIA request. If the relevant records are in electronic form, including email, the FOIA coordinator shall notify the information technology personnel or specialists for retrieval procedures. If questions arise as to what records are relevant to a pending litigation, pending investigation, or FOIA request, FOIA coordinator shall direct the immediate cessation of the disposal of all records. Moratorium on disposal of records of all suspended pending litigation, pending investigation, or FOIA request shall remain effective for the duration of the litigation or investigation until the FOIA request has been fully processed. That is all for record retention.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Where did we get this language?
From the MTA policy book.
Which policy matters? Okay. Why don't we reference at all the state retention record? Because if you go on MTA's website and look up, it takes you straight to the state. So, we're going to make up our own record retention when the state...
No, 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 we're going to use the state retention.
Okay, so why don't we just say that? Because that seems like that...
We're asked.
I don't understand why the... We have all this, the clerk is going to develop and distribute and arrange and manage and control when the state really controls record retentions.
Is that... Are you talking about Six Seven?
I'm talking about Six Two, Six Three, Six... I mean, Six Six, it's, again, each of us has supervisor, treasurer, clerk, elections, assessor, general records, there's... What is it? It's GS One through Thirty Four gives a record retention schedule enforced by the State of Michigan for every record in our office. So, why are we taking away... I mean, we all have our statutory duties to keep those individual records. Why are we making it harder on the clerk that doesn't need any more responsibilities with the job they have to do to put all of this stuff on them when I, as the treasurer, keep my records that I have to keep? I have a copy of my retention schedule. It's my statutory duty.
Okay. First of all, I mean, it's a good question, but I don't think the board can be in charge of all the records. This is one of the cases where they would identify a person who's the point person for disseminating record retention requirements. And you're right, there are... There's General Schedule Ten for the State of Michigan, there's General Schedule Twenty Five for township clerks, General Schedule Twenty Three for election records, General Schedule Eighteen for local fire and ambulance, General Schedule Twenty Six for local government human resources, which we obviously don't have a human resources, and then General Schedule Thirty Two for local government parks or regions. So, the way I interpret this is somebody's got to make sure these... This information is consistently applied across all departments and simply make sure the information's out there and accessible and that it's being followed. That's why I think the clerk's been identified, but...
Yeah, I just think it's putting responsibility... I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here that now I don't have to worry at all about my record retention until you tell me to worry about it. That just seems silly.
No, that's not true. You would still have to worry about meeting these...
Right.
...these schedules. That's what it said in the document.
It's Six Seven. Six Seven. Shouldn't that then say, "in accordance with requirements from the State of Michigan"?
I would think. I mean, if you wanted to just add that there, but I think you've got a lot of extra stuff here that is unnecessary.
One at a time. All township records shall be retained in accordance with the laws of the State of Michigan or...
With the approved State of Michigan record retention schedules for each office or each...
With the approved State of Michigan.
Record retention schedule.
State of Michigan. Record retention schedule.
And those... In that sheet you have, Jay, does it name those things? I mean, because you don't want to say each office, because we have more than offices.
Well, it...
I don't know what the proper word is right there.
Department.
Department, yeah.
Yeah, because they use a... Actually, they use a... We don't have a building department, but they use the term building department.
Department?
Yeah.
So, department.
So, I would say department.
Schedule for each department.
All township records shall be retained in accordance with the approval...
The approved record retention.
With the approved State of Michigan record retention schedule.
For each department.
But there are other... There's like ordinance enforcement as well.
Beach.
Planning and zoning.
Hang on a minute, you're getting ahead of me.
We don't need to have all those. We're... He's just naming all the different ones, because there's...
We don't need that. We don't have to put it in.
Well, if we just say the approved State of Michigan record retention schedule, I think that would be much easier.
I'm going to scratch the second. You want it?
Yes, because that's already covered in the state law.
And it covers local law enforcement as well, so this record will provide us with the necessary understanding.
Anything else, John?
No, like I said, I think if we're going to put that, all that on the clerk's...
I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, it just... Because that's all... If you... You can type in. That's one of the easiest things to find on the State of Michigan website, which is kind of hard to navigate, is the retention schedules. And if you go to MTA, that's what it takes you to. It doesn't take you to any of these types of policies, so...
I think what it's really just saying is putting into a lot of legal terms, the clerk has the responsibility of maintaining the records, period. That's part of his statutory duties.
Right.
And so, I think that that's what they're trying to say here in a lot of different ways, because there's emails, there's FOIA stuff, there's litigation, there's all kinds of things that you have to keep different things for. And I think it's just the clerk shall ensure that all township officials appointed are aware and implement the township's record management policies. So, it kind of like the buck stops in that office, and that's what they're... I think they're just trying to say.
Can we look at the last sentence of Six Four? Shouldn't it say, "are retained in accordance with State of Michigan" by the document?
Well, if the township's record retention policy is the State of Michigan's, I think that's just a safe...
So, change it?
So, I wonder if mail records...
So, should I change that last?
I don't think you have to. I think...
And it says, "in accordance with the township's record retention policies", that's okay? Or change it?
This is called records management, so maybe you do change it, because this isn't a records retention policy, it's a records management policy.
Yeah, it is retention, because it does get it to...
So, I would say...
So, you either change it there or there. I mean, you change records retention instead of records to management, but this encompasses more than retention, so I think you change it in Six Point Four. I think that's the proper place.
Retention and elimination at the appropriate period.
Yeah. Change it from township to state.
With the state's...
Record retention policy.
Why don't I just say State of Michigan? That way I know.
Well, we do have an MCL here, three nine nine point five.
And...
If that's of any interest.
Go ahead and read it.
It's General Schedule Number Ten, Michigan Township Record Retention, MCL three nine nine point five.
I think that's all that I'm going to need to get what's in there.
It just goes through a lot of what I've just talked about.
All right, well, we're good then.
All right? I just think we ought to reference that, so...
Any other changes you want to make? What's next?
FOIA.
This gets really dry fast. I would mention that there's really two parts to this FOIA as it's written into this document. There's what we currently have as our FOIA policy with some minor changes or additions, should say additions. And then at the end, there is a...
Summary.
Well, there's a state FOIA policy that's included as well.
Yeah, but this is all word for word from the MTA.
It's also word for word with some minor exceptions.
This was the 2019 law change that we needed to update, because our current one's from 2015.
If I looked it over, I just saw just a very minor few changes in wording and a sentence here or there type of thing.
Yeah, I think it was more or less just some additional paragraphs. I think I noted where they are, but...
So, there's two parts. One is the procedure and the guidelines, and the other one is the summary.
Right.
And both of these, when we implement them, have to be posted online.
Right.
Now, did we... Mike is the FOIA coordinator, is he in? Did we put...
We changed it in here.
Well, it says if the... Let me just go through a couple key paragraphs if I can, and then...
Okay.
So, the FOIA Procedures and Guidelines, preamble, statement, principles, policy of Tuscora Township to all persons except those incarcerated, consistent with the Michigan Freedom of Information Act, are entitled to full and complete information regarding affairs of government and the official acts of those who represent and as public officials and employees. The people shall be informed so that they are fully... They can fully participate in the democratic process. Township's policies with respect to FOIA requests is to comply with state law in all respects and to respond to FOIA requests in an consistent, fair, even-handed manner regardless of who makes the request. Township acknowledges as legal obligation to disclose all non-exempt public records in its possession pursuant to a FOIA request. Township acknowledges that sometimes essential to invoke the exemptions identified on FOIA in order to ensure the effective operation of government and protect the privacy of individuals. Township will protect the public's interest in disclosure while balancing the requirement to withhold or redact forces of certain records. Township's policies to disclose public records consist with and applies to state law. Township Board has established the following procedures and guidelines to implement the FOIA, and will create a written public summary of the specific procedures and guidelines relevant to the general public regarding how to submit written requests to the public body, explaining how to understand the public body's written responses, deposit requirements, recalculations, avenues for challenge and appeal. Written public summary will be written in a manner so as to easily understand by general So, the general policies, the Township Board acting pursuant to authority of MCL fifteen dot two thirty-six designates the administrative assistant as FOIA coordinator if administrative assistant is not available or township's supervisory act of FOIA coordinator.
Where's that at?
At the Section One.
Section One, first paragraph. First sentence, first paragraph.
Yeah, that should be... Designates the... We already did that, right?
We have a resolution.
Yeah, so it should say supervisor.
Township supervisor as coordinator.
It designates the administrative assistant.
Yeah, it needs to say supervisor.
Uh huh, it should.
If the supervisor... And then we... What do we do? We scratch the second line?
I believe so.
Or should we...
No, I believe so.
If the supervisor's not available, the clerk...
No, I think you can just scratch that if the administrative assistant is not available, township's supervisor shall act upon it.
Yeah, but the point is that Mike's not...
Scratch that, but it says in the next sentence, "he or she is authorized to designate a township official", so that kind of covers that.
Because I think it...
Yeah, okay, got it. I got it.
You can't have two people.
Exactly.
So, it does... Yeah, correct.
He can designate if necessary.
If a request for public record is received by fact, the email request is deemed available and received on the following business date. Then it gets into some detailed...
You know, I don't want to...
I'm just going to read the first paragraph, the first sentence. Fork coordinator shall review township's spam junk mail folders regular basis. FOIA coordinator, in his or her discretion, implement administrative rules consistent with state law. Township is now obligated to create a new public record and make a compilation, summary of information which does not already exist. Township... The FOIA coordinator shall keep a copy of written requests received by the township for at least a year. Township will make this procedure and guidelines document and the written public summary publicly available without charge. Copy this procedure and guidelines document the township's written public summary must be publicly available by providing three copies, both in the township's responsible written request and upon request by visitor to the township offices. Procedures and guidelines document the township written public summary will be maintained in the township's website at tuscoratownship.com.
Can we stop there a second? The third paragraph in Section One, I mean, I don't want to stray too far from this, because it's MTA word for word, but do we really need this sentence, "which shall be no less than once a month"? I mean, can't we just say, "the FOIA coordinator shall review township's spam and junk mail folders on a regular basis, period"? It just seems kind of overly restrictive.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
So, can we put a period after basis and scratch the words, "which shall be no less than once a month"?
Yeah.
Yes, is that right? Bobby? Anything else on that paragraph? Thank you.
All right, Section Two, requesting a public record. No specific form to submit a request for a public record is required, however, FOIA coordinator may make available a FOIA request form for use by the public. I believe we do have FOIA request forms. And so, those would be next to this document in some way, shape, or form. Requests to inspect or obtain copies of public records prepared, owned, and used for the zest or routine of the township may be submitted on the township's FOIA request Verbal requests for records may be documented by the township on the township's form. If a person makes a verbal narrative request for information, believed to be available on the township's website, we're practical. And to the best ability of the employer, receiving request shall be informed of the per... And to the best ability of the employer, receiving requests shall be informed of the person and website address.
Can I stop in the middle of this? Is it by law that we have to take verbal requests? That could, I think, lead to trouble.
Yes.
And I know this comes from the MTA, but to, you know, if someone.
That's a problem for me.
It is, because if someone says something and it's misconstrued, if they say it to you and they think, okay, that was a FOIA request and you thought it was just a discussion.
No, you're right. I did this in the federal government for a long time and we never, ever, so, ever.
It goes against everything else that the policy sees.
So where are we?
So on the verbal request, yeah, I, I, one thing that I think we're already doing is because it's happened to me years ago, what it happened, I came in and made a verbal request for a FOIA thing and Sue said, "Just write it down for me. Just here's a piece of paper, here's a pencil, write it down and sign it." That's all they have to do and in that way it's done, because verbal things is not good. But, but you, you don't have to necessarily to be an inconvenience for the person to do a whole form or something like that. Just a note even, just to say, "Here it is, this is the information I want," and date it and sign it is good enough.
Well, it says no specific form to submit a request for public record is required, so.
I would scratch.
Exactly.
So I can get rid of, as long as it's not illegal, I would let's get rid of verbal requests.
Well, I mean, they can make a verbal request, you still have to write it down, right? Right there in the office.
So I would get rid of paragraphs three and four.
But people are going to make verbal requests. The point is, you would like them to write it down.
Yes. You almost have to to make sure that you comply with the request.
But you don't have to go find the form.
Right, no specific form, like she said, here's a piece of pa, I mean, I do that. If people want a flat combination, write it down.
So I would, I would suggest that you can tell me if it's acceptable, verbal requests records shall be documented in writing.
I'd just scratch it.
Yeah, because again, you're putting it on.
You're putting it on the employee. It's not.
But the thing of it is, we can put in, I think we leave verbal request in, because it happens all the time. But what we need to do is make sure, you can't be so restrictive on this kind of stuff. They come in, if you hand them a piece of paper and say, "Can you just write it down exactly what you want?"
What happens when they call you on the phone? They say, "Send me da-da-da-da-da-da."
Then they have to send you an email or come into the office.
Then why are we allowing verbal requests?
I wouldn't allow verbal.
You'd get rid of the sentence.
I really wouldn't.
Yeah. A verbal request is, "Hey, will you send me a copy of my tax receipt?"
Yeah.
That's not a FOIA request. That's a request for information, but it's not a FOIA. A FOIA is a more detailed and specific request.
So that's, you're right, because FOIA is.
If somebody calls you, Janet, and says, "I'm filing a formal FOIA request, send me this," you should be able to say, "Can you please get that to me in writing?"
Exactly. So I know exactly the way I'm applying to.
There's a difference between, what she's saying, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but the difference between a request for information and a FOIA request is a big deal.
Yeah, one's covered by law, one's a courtesy.
I would even scratch four, but.
I would want or by verbal request in that first par, or second paragraph.
I'm sorry?
So, or by verbal request in that second paragraph, the very last words.
Where are you?
I see it.
Oh, okay.
Because you were, I mean, this is.
Exactly, exactly.
And I think you're right. You scratch three because this is a FOIA. This isn't request.
Township may be submitted in any other form, writing, period, right? Et cetera, and then scratch, or by verbal request, and then the very next one.
And then the next one too, I think you're right. Well, no, you could leave that because if they make a verbal request.
And it's on the website.
And you send them there, then.
Or you can even email them the FOIA request sheet or whatever.
Oh, okay. This just says that if they're asking for something that's already on the township website, you should just direct them to that website.
Yeah.
But that, again, that's more a request for information as opposed to a FOIA request in my mind, but.
If it was up to me, I'd scratch four altogether. Is everybody okay with me scratching four?
I just did.
So you took off if a person requests to make a verbal non-request.
Yeah, so paragraphs three and four are gone.
Okay.
And there's a change to paragraph two, or by verbal request.
Yep.
Is gone.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And if we, if someone does do a written request, must sufficiently describe a public record so as to enable township personnel to identify and find requested public records.
Well, that's only fair. You can't give them the whole file folder.
A request from a person other than an individual qualifies as an agent under MCL fifteen two thirty-four two dash eight must include the requesting person's complete name, address, and contact information. And if the request is made by a person other than the individual, the complete name, address, and contact, contact different, that person versus agent who is an individual. The address must be written according to United States Postal Service addressing standard, so you can tell this was written by.
Does anybody use fax anymore? Do you even have one?
Please.
We get a few.
That's like the legal documents. You can sign a fax. You can't sign an email like the legal. Yeah, but like for contractors, fax would be.
So it gets into what the contact information includes such as telephone number, email. Requests for public records may be submitted in person or by mail to the township offices. Requests can be submitted electronically by fax and email. They should be promptly forwarded to the FOIA coordinator if done so. Person making requests may stipulate the public body's response to electronically mailed email delivered by fax or delivered first-class mail to the township will comply unless the township lacks a technical capability to provide an electronically mailed or fax. Person may request that the public records be provided on paper, on paper, physical media, email, or otherwise provided. There's an extra word in there, other, that needs to come out.
Where's that?
Right here.
The title.
The title of this.
A person.
There's an extra word in there. A person may request.
Or otherwise, not or other, otherwise.
And we need just otherwise is fine. Provided to him or her in a digital form in lieu of. Provided in digital form in lieu of paper copies.
A person may subscribe to future issues. Is that what you're saying though?
No, I put above that.
Oh, a person may request public records. Or. Got it. Understood. Thank you. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure I get it right.
Yeah. Person may subscribe to the future issues of public records that are created issue you're disseminating by the township on a regular basis. Subscription is valid for up to six months and may be renewed by the subscriber.
Is that true?
Yes.
So you drop off after six months?
Yes.
They have to just re-subscribe?
Yes.
People know that? Most people do. Kathy did.
For example, I guess.
Yeah, because I questioned that early on.
Someone came in and asked for budgets and they wanted a budget each month, right? So they could give that up to six months. After that, you have to renew.
Yeah. I didn't know they had to.
Unless it's available online.
Unless it's, okay, yes.
Then you refer it online.
Again, it gets into a person serving a sentence is not entitled to submit a request for public record. FOIA coordinator will deny such requests. Now we're getting into processing a request. Unless otherwise agreed to in writing by the person making the request, the township will issue a response within five business days of receipt of the FOIA request. If a request is received by fax, email, or other electronic transmission, the request is deemed to have been received on the following business day. Township will respond to requests in the following ways. They could grant the request, issue a written notice denying the request. Grant the request in part, issue a written notice denying in part request. Issue a notice indicating that due to the nature of the request, the township needs additional ten business days to respond. For a total of no more than fifteen business days, only one such extension is permitted, issue a written notice indicating the public record requested is available at no charge on the township's website. Again, directing them to where they can find the information. When a request is granted, if the request is granted or granted in part, the FOIA will require the payment in full for lawful fees associated with responding to requests before the public record is made available. The FOIA coordinator shall provide a detailed itemization of the lawful costs. A copy of these procedures and guidelines in the written public summary will be provided to the requester for your charge. However, because these procedures and guidelines in the written public summary are maintained on the township's website at tuscoratownship.com, a link to the procedures and guidelines will be provided in lieu of provided paper copies of those documents. If the cost of processing a FOIA request is fifty dollars or less, the requester will be notified of the overdue or the documents can be obtained. If the cost of processing a FOIA request is expected to exceed fifty dollars based on a good faith calculation, the Requestor, and if the Requestor is not paid full for the previously granted request, the township will require a good faith deposit pursuant to section four of this policy before processing.
And it's the same as the old policy.
In making the request for a good faith deposit, the FOIA coordinator shall provide the request with a detailed itemization of the lawful costs. The best effort estimate shall be not impiting on the township, but will be a good faith. It will strive to reason fact or given the nature of the request and declare henceforth as provided requested records in there based on public policy expressed in section four. When a request is denied or denied in part, if the request is denied in part, the coordinator will issue a notice of denial and shall provide in applicable circumstances, an explanation as to why the public record is exempt from this. A certificate that the requested record does not exist, a name or description provided by the Requestor. An explanation or description of the public record information within a public record that is separated or deleted from the public record. An explanation of person's right to submit an appeal of the denial to either the Office of Township Supervisor or Clerk or to seek judicial review in Tuscora County Circuit Court. An explanation of the right to receive attorney's fees, costs, disbursements, as well as actual compensa, compensa, compenss, compensatory, compensatory damages, punitive damages of one thousand dollars should they prevail in Circuit Court. The notice of denial shall be signed by the FOIA coordinator. If the request does not sufficiently describe the public record, the FOIA coordinator may, in lieu of issuing a notice of denial, indicate that the request is deficient, see clarification or amendment of the request by the person making the request. Any clarification or amendment will be considered in the request subject to timelines described above. Requests to inspect public records. Township shall provide reasonable facilities and opportunities for persons to examine and inspect public records during normal business hours. FOIA coordinator is authorized to promulgate rules regulating the manner in which records may be reviewed so as to protect township records from loss, alteration, mutilation, or destruction to prevent excessive interference with normal township operations. While receiving written or verbal requests to inspect township records, township shall refer to the requested person with a reasonable opportunity and reasonable facilities for inspection and examination.
Can we stop? I don't think we can scratch that one. So in other words, they come into the office, they want to see the minutes. Okay, I just want to.
Yeah, and that happens like.
All the time.
Even with the SAD approval letters and things like that, people want to see them.
Yeah.
No big deal. Let them see them.
I just want to make sure everybody's up here.
Yep.
A person shall be allowed to inspect public records during usual business hours, not less than four hours per day. The public does not have unlimited access to township offices or facilities. And a person may be required to inspect records at a specified counter for the table in view of township personnel. And then I think the rest of this is somewhat new from the MTA that may not be in our FOIA, so I might go through these. Township officials, appointee staff, or consultants, contractors assisting with the inspection of public records shall inform any person inspecting records that own pencils and pens, and maybe you take notes. In coordination with the official runs responsible for the records, the FOIA coordinator shall determine on a case-by-case basis whether township will provide copies of original records to allow for blacking out exempt information to protect full or delicate original records or because the original record is a digital file or database not available for public inspection.
A lot of this is based on that.
So, so basically it says we want to protect our records, so we will do what's necessary. FOIA coordinator is responsible for identifying if records or information requested by the public is stored in digital files or email, even if the public does not specifically request a digital file or email. Person cannot remove books, records, or files from the place where the inspections taken place. No documents shall be removed from the office of the custodian of those documents without permission of that custodian except by court order, subpoena, or for audit purposes. Official may be given a receipt listing the records being removed. Documents may be removed from the office of the custodian of those documents with permission of that custodian to accommodate public inspection of those documents. In coordination with the official response, with the coordination with the official responsible for the records, FOIA coordinator will determine on a case-by-case basis when the township will provide copies of original records to allow for blacking out of exempted information to protect full or delicate, basically the same thing. Is that, is that the application?
I was just gonna say, that sounds like a. It's the exact same.
Yeah, but it's there for a reason. I would hate, I would hate to change that.
Well, what they're saying is that you may be able to charge a fee for making those copies that are blacked out because that takes extra.
But you do have to make a decision on this line that says optional. That's going to require a decision. Do you want to leave that or do you want to scratch it?
I think we should leave it because if we provide blacked-out copies of delicate information, let's say about a litigation or something like that that's going on, that takes a lot of manpower to actually make it.
I was gonna say, we charge for copies.
But if you're blacking things out.
Can I scratch the word optional? Is that what you're telling me?
I would agree to that. We charge for copies because, because it takes more manpower to black that information out and stuff, so. I don't think it happens that often.
Oh, can I, can I ask a question? You probably know the answer to this. If we don't do a certain number of copies in there, ten cents a copy, do we still have to pay a certain minimal floor? Do you know?
I don't know if we have a floor. I can't imagine that we don't ever.
Okay.
Because they do account monthly, so I would say, yeah.
So requests for certified copies, the FOIA coordinator shall, upon written request, furnish a certified copy of a public record at no additional cost to the person. Fee deposit, section four. If the fee estimate is expected to exceed fifty dollars based on a good faith calculation, the Requestor will be asked to provide a deposit not exceeding one half of the total estimated fee. The request for public records is from a person who has not paid the township in full of copies of public records made in fulfillment of previously granted written request. The FOIA coordinator will refer deposit one hundred percent of the estimated fee before beginning a search for public records or any subsequent written request by that person. When all the following conditions exist, so there are conditions in this. Final fee for the prior written request is not within one hundred and five percent of the estimated public records may available continued information sought in prior requests in the township possession. Public records were made available to the individual subject to payment with a demand frame estimated by the township applied. Ninety days have passed since the FOIA coordinator notified the individual writing that the records were available for pickup or mailing. Individuals unable to show proof of prior payment to the township. FOIA coordinator has calculated a detailed itemization that is a basis for the current request. Increased estimated fee deposit. FOIA coordinator will not require an estimated fee deposit in any of the following conditions apply. So before I get into this one, is there any comments there? I believe this is what we have in our current FOIA document today. FOIA coordinator will not require an increased estimated fee deposit if the following apply. Person making a request is able to show proof of prior payment. Township is subsequently paid in full. Three hundred and sixty-five days have passed since the person made the request, which full payment was not permitted to the township. And I believe this is, this next paragraph is, is a, is a new addition over above our current policy. If a deposit is not received by the township within forty-eight days from the. If a deposit is not received by the township within forty-eight days from the date that the notice of deposit requirement is set, and if the requesting person does not file an appeal or deposit amount, the request shall be considered abandoned by the requesting person and the township is no longer required to fulfill the request. Notice of a deposit requirement must include notice of the date by which the deposit was received, or must be received, which dates forty-eight days after the date the notice is set. Any questions on that? Then we get into calculation of fees. Fee may be charged for labor, cost of copying duplication. Fee will not be charged for the labor cost of search, examination, review, deletion, and separation of exempt from non-exempt information unless failure to charge a fee would result in unreasonably high cost to the township because of the nature of the request. In this particular instance, the township specifically identifies the nature of the unreasonably high cost. Cost for search, examination, review, and deletion, separation of exempt from non-exempt information are reasonably high when they are excessive beyond the normal or usual amount for those services. And this is an Attorney General opinion seven zero eight-three of two thousand and one compared to the cost of the township's usual FOIA request, not compared to the township's operating budget. So, you have to be consistent, right? Following factors shall be used to determine unreasonably high cost to the township. Volume of the public record requested, information, or amount of time spent to search, examine, review, separate, exempt from non-exempt information in the record requested, whether the public records are from more than one township department, whether various township offices are necessary to respond to the request, available staffing to respond, any other similar factors identified by the FOIA Coordinator in responding to the particular request. Michigan FOIA statute prevents the township to charge for the following costs associated with the request. Labor costs associated with copying or duplication, paper, digital, transferring digital to non-paper, physical media, the internet. Labor costs associated with searching for, locating, examining, requesting public record when failure to charge a fee will result in an unreasonably high cost to the township. Labor costs associated with review of record to separate, delete information exempt from disclosure when failure to charge a fee will result in an unreasonably high cost to the township. Cost of copying duplication, not including labor of paper copies, public records, this may include the cost of copies of records already in the township's website if the Requester asks for the township to make copies. And then, I believe in news from the MTA is the actual most reasonably economical cost of non-paper physical media when the Requester asks for records in any form of non-paper physical media. This may include the cost for copies of records already in the township's website if the Requester asks the township to make copies. So, that's a lot of words.
So, really, we don't charge unless they ask for paper copies, pretty much is what they're saying.
Right, I think that, I think that's, yeah. So, I wanted to summarize.
Right.
The cost to mail or send a public record to a Requester. Labor cost will be calculated on a follow-up course, minimum recourse. All labor costs will be estimated and charged in fifteen-minute increments. Labor cost will be charged at the hourly wage of the lowest paid township employee capable of doing his work. Regardless of who does the work, labor cost will also include a charge to cover partially, cover the cost of fringe benefits the township may add.
So, just to be clear, if Mike was doing the work or you were doing the work, you would have to charge the lowest rate of the person in the office capable of doing it, which in this case would be lower.
Would be more.
Lower its base scale.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Whether or not he did it.
Because that's important, that'll get you in trouble. Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine, it clarifies things. Labor cost, see, labor cost will also include a charge to cover or partially cover the cost of fringe benefits. Township may add the fifty percent of the applicable labor charge amount to cover or partially cover the cost of fringe benefits, but in no case exceed the actual cost of fringe benefits. Overtime wages will not be included in labor cost unless agreed to by the Requester. And we will not use overtime costs in the calculation of the fringe benefit cost. Contracted labor costs will be charged at the rate of forty-eight dollars ninety cents, six times the state minimum hourly wage. The cost to provide records on non-paper, physical media, and so requested will be based on the following requirements. Any form of non-paper, physical media, for example, USB drives, computer disks, computer tapes, other digital or similar media, will be at the actual, most reasonably economical cost for that non-paper type of media. This cost will be assessed if the township has the technical capability necessary to provide the public records in the requested non-paper, physical media form. Township may, will procure any non-paper media and will not accept media from the Requester in order to ensure integrity of the township's technical, technical infrastructure.
So, wait a minute.
Yep.
So, what they're saying is if someone comes in with a USB, you can't accept it because if you put it, you could get a virus or something on their computer. So, we would have to provide that for them.
Can we go back up to the hourly rate? Isn't the state minimum wage nine twenty-five an hour?
I think so, yeah, something like that.
So, this is the old rate. So, that really needs to say fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. Or, we could scratch the word forty-eight ninety altogether.
I don't think we use contracted labor costs anyway. We have office personnel who have that.
I would just scratch the forty-eight ninety. At the hourly rate of six times the state. Is that okay?
That's if we had contracted labor costs for, to fulfill them.
Okay. So, we'll take it out of parentheses and it will say contracted labor costs will be charged at the hourly rate of six times the state minimum hourly wage, period. Everybody good?
Yeah.
Because things keep going up.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm there. So, the cost to provide paper copies of records will be based on the following requirements. For copies of public records, standard letter or legal sized paper will not exceed ten cents per sheet of paper used. Copies of non-standard sized sheets of paper will reflect the actual cost of reproduction. Township will provide records using double-sided printing if it is across savings available. Cost to mail records to Requester will be based on the following requirements. The actual cost to handle public records using a reasonably economical and justified means. Township may charge for the least expensive form of postal delivery and confirmation. No cost will be made for expedited shipping or insurance unless satisfied by the Requester. If the FOIA Coordinator does not respond to a request in a timely manner, township must reduce labor costs by five percent for each day the township exceeds time permitted under the FOIA, up to fifty percent maximum reduction if any of the following applies. Township's late response was willful and intentional. The written requests conveyed a request for information within the first two hundred and fifty words of the body of a letter, fax, or email or email attachment. The written request included the words, characters, or abbreviations for freedom of information, information FOIA copy, or recognizable misgovernings such or bingo code, NCL fifteen dot two thirty-one, Public Act nineteen seventy-six, Public Act four four two, on the front of an envelope bearing the subject line of an email directed for fax. So, just want to summarize that.
I agree, I get it.
All right. Waiver of fees, section six. The cost of the search for copying of a public record may be waived or reduced if the sole judgment of the FOIA Coordinator on waiver or reduce fees in the public interest because it can be considered as a primarily benefiting the general public. Township board may identify specific records or types of records that these should be made available for no charge or at reduced cost.
That's pretty standard.
All right. Discounted fees. Indigence will discount the first twenty dollars in the processing fee for request if the person requesting submits an affidavit stating they are indigent in receiving specific public assistance, or if not receiving public assistance stating facts demonstrating inability to pay because of indigence. Individual that is not eligible to receive waiver and it is not eligible to receive if Requester has previously received discounted copies of public records from the township twice during the calendar year, Requester requests information in connection with other persons who are offering or providing payment to make the request. An affidavit is sworn statement. FOIA Coordinator may make a fee waiver affidavit form available to the public. Non-profit organization advocating for the development of disabled or mentally ill individuals. FOIA Coordinator will discount the first twenty dollars of the processing fee. For a request from a non-profit organization formerly designated by the state to carry out activities under subtitle C of the federal developmental disabilities assistance available rights, Act two thousand, Public Law one oh six four two. The protection and advocacy for individuals with mental illness, Public Law ninety-nine three one nine, or their successors. If the following, if the request meets all the following requirements, so is made directly on behalf of the organization or its clients, is made for reasonably consistent permission provisions of those laws under section nine three one of Mental Health Code, is accompanied by documentation of its designation by the state if requested by the public body. Any comments there? Section eight, appeal of a denial of a public record.
None of that changed.
That's all the same.
Yeah, all of this is all the same, so I just want to-
Not all of it. But section eight is all the same, all right.
Do you want to skip section eight? Do you have any questions on section eight? We go with section nine. Let's go with section nine.
Section nine, appeal of an excessive FOIA processing.
Yeah, this is worth a change.
Fee means the total fee or any component of the total fee calculated under section four of the FOIA, including any deposit. If the Requester believes that the fee charged by the township to process the FOIA request exceeds the amount permitted by state law or under this policy, he or she must first appeal to the township board by submitting a written appeal or fee reduction to the office of the FOIA coordinator. Appeal must be in writing specifically, state the word appeal, identify how the required fee exceeds the amount permitted. Township board is not considered to have received a written appeal until the first regularly scheduled township board meeting, following the submission of the written appeal. And then ten days after receiving that appeal, township board will respond in writing by either waiving the fee, reducing the fee, and issuing a written determination indicating on what basis they're reducing the fee. Issuing a notice detailing the reason for, or reasons for extending for not more than ten business days, the period which the township board will respond to the written appeal. Township board shall not issue more than one notice of extension for a particular written appeal. Where the board reduces or unfolds a fee, the determination must include a certification from the township board that the statements in the determination are accurate and that the reduced fee amount complies with its publicly available procedures and guidelines in section four of the FOIA. Within forty-five days after receiving notice of the township's board's determination of an appeal, the requesting person may commence civil action in Spoham County Circuit Court for a fee reduction. If a civil action is commenced against the township, the township is not obligated to complete the processing of the written request at issue until the court resolves a fee dispute. An action shall not be filed in Circuit Court unless one of the following applies. Township does not provide for appeals of fees. The township board failed to respond to written appeal as reported. The township board issued a determination to a written appeal. The court determines that the township required a fee that exceeds the amount permitted under its publicly available procedures and guidelines, the court shall reduce the fee to a permissible amount. Failure to comply with it or the court may be punished as contempt of court. If the requesting person prevails in court by receiving a reduction of fifty percent or more of the total fee, the court may, in its discretion, award all or an appropriate portion of reasonable attorney fees, costs, and disbursements. The award shall be assessed against the public body by both the damages. If the court determines that the township has arbitrarily and creepishly violated the FOIA by charging excessive fee, the court shall order the township to pay a civil fine of five hundred dollars which shall be deposited in the general fund of the state treasury. Court may also award, in addition to any actual compensatory damages, punitive damages amount of five hundred dollars to person seeking the fee reduction. The fine and any damages shall not be assessed against an individual but shall be assessed against the next succeeding public body that is not an individual and kept or maintained the public record as part of its public function. Section ten, the last section in this portion is conflict with prior FOIA policies and procedures effective date. To the extent that these procedures and guidelines conflict with previous FOIA policies promulgated by the township board or the township administration, these procedures and guidelines are controlling to the extent that any administrative rule promulgated by a FOIA coordinator subsequent to the adoption of this resolution is found to be in conflict with any previous policy promulgated by the township board or the township administration, the administrative rule promulgated by the FOIA coordinator is controlling. To the extent that provision of these procedures and guidelines or any administrative rule promulgated by the FOIA coordinator pertaining to the release of public records is found to be in conflict with any state statute, the applicable statute shall control. The FOIA coordinator is authorized to modify this policy and all previous policies adopted by the township board or township administration and adopt such administrative rules as he or she may deem necessary to facilitate the legal review and processing of requests for public records made pursuant to Michigan's FOIA statute, provided that such modifications and rules are consistent with the state law. The FOIA coordinator shall inform the township board of any change to these policies and guidelines. Any comments?
And then the next section is just a summary of what you just went over, right?
Right.
It is.
And like question and answer thing for the general public, how to do what, you know, how to fill out the forms.
If you go, under number one, if you go to paragraph one, two, and you go down a little bit, halfway down paragraph one, it says, "Any verbal request will be documented." We should scratch that.
Yeah.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Agree.
In the end of the sentence, in the paragraph right before that, it says-
Right, got it. In any other form of ground. Sure. Got it.
So, does anybody want to have me read any of this question and answers?
I don't think it's necessary, but I do have a change.
We're good with it.
I had to ask.
You guys got this?
Please, please, stop. You'll get your chance during public comment. If you go to where it says labor costs, under number three, we'll go down there and change that too. It says contracted labor costs will be charged at the hourly rate of six times the state minimum hourly wage. Does everybody go with that? Yes? Okay.
I have no other changes.
Janet?
No.
Any motions?
I think the motion that we accept, chapter six, is written with the amendments agreed on.
Does it go for a training review?
No.
It says that, it also says in there, we just read, that if the FOIA coordinator needs to make any-
I'll second the motion.
Any changes, that the policy, that he just comes to the board with the policy changes, so I think we're good.
So, is there-
Well, let's just-
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have a discussion. I'd just like to go through this real quick. In six-two, we're scratching the one that says, "As noted in policy, blah, blah, blah." In six- In six-four, we're going to say instead of township, state of Michigan. In six-seven, we're going to say, "With the approved state of Michigan record for each department." Bear with me, please. Under Procedures and Guidelines, section one, we're going to scratch Administrative Assistant Put in Supervisor, and then scratch the second line. In paragraph three, we're going to put a period after regular basis, and scratch the words, "Which shall..." "Which shall be no less than once a month."
Right.
In section two, we're going to put a period there and scratch out, "Or by verbal request." Scratch out paragraph three and four, which refers to verbal requests. There's a typo on the next page of "other" that will be scratched. And the word optional is taking, is being taken out, the second to the last paragraph in front of section four. I'm going too fast, so... Contracted labor costs will just say, "At the hourly rate of six times the state minimum." And then, under the summary, which is six-ten, we're going to put a period and get rid of "or by verbal request," and then we're going to scratch out, "Any verbal request, et cetera, et cetera." And then, under labor costs, we're going to change that like we did the other one. Contracted labor costs will be charged at the hourly rate of six times the state minimum hourly wage. I believe that's it.
Is there any additional discussion? I'd like to take a roll call on the motion. Are you ready?
Yeah, please.
Kramer?
Yes.
Bobby?
No.
Janet?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
So, three to one.
Okay, so, the next one's personnel actions. Anybody have anything? Nastacy? Next side, Nastacy? Anybody have anything on Nastacy?
Just, just the fact that we do have both Allenberg and Clayton McGovern scheduled for, I'm going to get this right, the first and the third. So the third's a Saturday, correct? So Clayton will be there at ten AM on the third, where we can ask questions.
He's helping me with the watch, isn't he?
And Allenberg will be on there on the first, seven PM. And I've circulated a request for any questions that I can compile and send to them. And this is regard to what, what their, their business plans are, what competitive practices are out there, and how we can learn and improve.
Anything else, Nastacy? Anybody?
No.
Audit, next subject?
I will mention that I talked to Joe Berlin today, and he believes the audit will be complete by the twenty-third of the summer. And I have scheduled him for January third, or his, depending on how we decide to do this, whether we go with a Zoom call, or whether we have his, his analyst, or not, not his analyst, but his, the CPA that did the audit here.
I don't think Mike...
Andrew?
I don't think Mike has Zoom anymore, do we?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we got it back? Shouldn't we, isn't that cheaper for us?
I would think.
Okay.
So Joe said he'd be willing to work with us, and obviously, he's the other. We just have to decide.
Zoom's easy for him to... Any other audit stuff? CPA?
No, there was, Joe Berlin did not mention that we owed him any audit information at the time of work. Do you know of any information we made on?
The last things were sent in by Dawn and I before she left office.
There's one more. There's, there's one more.
The single audit.
The single audit.
The single audit, yes, to be.
Yeah.
Anything else, audit? Budget adjustments? Anybody have any? No? Next subject, housekeeping?
I have a housekeeping.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had two different calls from people on committees that received the memo, wondering why they're being required, they've done their reports, and been told they have to send it in Word format only.
Correct.
Why is that?
We're going to compile all the similar formats into a single document and put it in the packet.
Okay. It costs money, so Mike has that program to convert to a Word document, so asking different people who work on different platforms that are volunteers to submit when they don't have that ability is...
Who provided the Word documents?
But if they print it...
I don't sure, I don't know your problem.
I think what she's saying is, a lot of people don't have Word.
Right. And, or if I print it out and fill out my form and I scan it, I can only scan it in a PDF. I can't scan it into a Word document unless I scan it as a PDF, have a converter program.
So you're suggesting we use Gmail docs, or...
I'm suggesting we take what we get, and we deal with it in office, to get it to, I mean, we're going to, how are we going to disseminate it? You're going to either scan it again, you can print it and scan it again, or it gets emailed to Mike and he, I don't know if you or Mike are dealing with it, but I don't think we ask, we're already asking enough change with the consent agenda and filling out this form every month and kind of doing things differently, to say it has to be a Word document, you cannot get reports from people because it's not convenient for them. We don't want to make that harder.
Well, if we have the ability to, to convert them, we, I think we just should do that.
We can ask Laura to do that.
Yeah, Mike...
Ah.
Yeah, like, because we're, yeah.
I have a suggestion. You may recall I sent out that COFAX, that program. So in other words, if you had Adobe PDF, you could convert anything...
Right.
...to PDF.
Right.
But that's very, very expensive. And if we want to put everything for the whole board meeting in one file, we need a program like that. Well, COFAX is an alternative to that expensive Adobe, Adobe software, and that's why the county uses it. And I bought it for myself, I showed it to Laura today.
Yeah, so we should, can use it here, we don't need to require other people.
But what I'm saying is, it, it's a one-time cost, so Adobe's a subscription that goes forever. This COFAX, you could even take PDF documents, in fact, Laura and I converted a large PDF document in like ten seconds to Word.
Yeah.
So if we were to buy, you, you probably need it.
I, I just give, if I ever have anything that needs to be converted, I figure it out myself or give it to Mike, because he's got it on his computer.
Okay.
We paid for one, that's why, it's on his computer, because we didn't want to pay for multiple copies of the program.
What's on this?
The whatever converter program we have, I don't even know.
He may have that.
It may be COFAX, it may be...
He may have that.
Yeah, I don't know what program it is, but we, we just purchased one download of it, as opposed to putting it on everyone's computers, because we don't use it.
Yeah, that's expensive, because that would, that would cost us over a thousand bucks, even though it's one-time. But we could get Laura one and the clerk one, probably for about a hundred and twenty-five bucks one time.
Yeah. So I say we do that, as opposed to making things hard for...
Oh, I agree.
People.
So I make a motion that we purchase two COFAX licenses, not to exceed three hundred dollars.
I second.
All in favor?
Any discussion?
We did. All in favor?
Aye.
So...
That's, that's all ayes.
Yeah, all ayes, yeah.
He makes the purchase, or? She can?
Laura, yeah.
All right, so I'll just get the information. I want to get, I have somewhere, I have a discount though, we get like ten or fifteen bucks on.
Okay, perfect. If you get that to Laura, she can...
So just to summarize, motion was to purchase COFAX?
Two, two licenses.
Two licenses.
For COFAX.
Not to exceed three hundred dollars.
I'm sure it'll be less, but...
So then we're just, we're going to take the reports as they come and deal with it in-house?
Absolutely.
And the rest of the...
Yeah, we don't want to make it difficult for people.
Any other housekeeping? Anything? Okay. Housekeeping?
Uh, no.
I'm good.
Citizen comments? Yes, ma'am?
Back to the FOIA and the verbal request. I think you should probably check, double-check on that, because I took a webinar through Fay Schultz a while back, and they said the law, that if someone comes in and asks you and doesn't want to write it down, you have to give it to them. So you might want to check, that's probably why it's in the MPA guidance. So you might want to check before you make that change.
Fair enough.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Patrick McGinnis, and I've got a comment to make, and I probably should have made this during the agenda comments, but the brevity of the agenda didn't detail what was going into, but I've got concerns about your, what you've just approved and put into the records on the six-point-one. My wife and I both volunteer at no pay, no per diem, nothing on committees for this township board. The way I read this, we have to maintain records, which would be on our personal computers, which also has business records, health records, tax records on them, and that the township has the right to look at those computers to make sure we're keeping the files correct. And there's nothing in there that says volunteers, it does say volunteers have to supply and keep this stuff, but if it's on our personal computers, I have a lot of heartburn about turning over my personal computers, phones, tablets, and other recording devices to the township, so they can just browse through and look at what they want to. Some of the stuff we have is very proprietary, and I think business people that we've dealt with would be upset to know that their records are going to be scrutinized by the township. So I think if you keep that six-point-one in here, you're going to have big whooshing sound, which is going to be all the volunteers and the township boards leaving en masse. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else?
Couple things. Mr. McGinnis, I share your concerns. I think those are requirements from the state. I think that they've just not been enforced in the past, but I have often warned current and former board members about using personal computers to conduct township business for exactly that reason. I think it's something that should get resolved for your benefit and for every other board member's or volunteer's benefit. The discussions about the format and not having Word, I think it's ridiculous. Who doesn't have Word?
Any good with that?
You, you made a bunch of discussions about minimum wage, and there's a thing in there about six times the minimum wage. This general discussion, I didn't know this until I did the research sitting here right now. As a result of the Mothering versus Nestle lawsuit in the Michigan Court of Claims decided in July of this year, in February of twenty-three, the Michigan minimum wage is twelve dollars an hour.
When is it?
February of twenty-three. Right now, it's nine sixty-five. You misstated it earlier, but... I, I would very adamantly suggest almost bordering on demand, I want that auditor here. I want him in the room. I don't care what it costs. You don't get the correct feel, you don't get the correct interaction of the seriousness of the situations that we've dealt with in the audit. And we've heard comments about how those of us that question the things that have been previously brought up, the material weaknesses, I, I really would prefer them in the room. And in closing, it's rhetorical, I don't expect them to answer, but Bobby, I'm really curious why you would vote no on section six. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Board comments?
I, I can answer. I, I'm not an attorney, and Dawn brought that up. If we took some things out, we made changes, I don't feel setting policy that we're going forward with should be set without attorney review. I, I won't vote yes on any of it if it's not being reviewed by an attorney.
Thank you. Fair answer.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.